The thirteenth Board of Supervisor Meeting.
This now gives me the okay that we're ready to.
Okay. Miss Ann.
Call this meeting to order, roll please, Michelle.
Avon.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo. Groveland.
Here.
Lester. Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Danville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd like to ask Canisius Supervisor Don Martin to read some of the quadrilegits.
I'd like to read some to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We had some meeting minutes from our last regular meeting, the twenty-second of June. Does anyone have any additions, changes that could run forward at this time? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion in a second, please.
Motion, sir. Second.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're carried. Communications, please, Michelle.
Receipt of resignation letter for the Ethics Committee Board from Lori Satora. Receipt of notice of claim in the matter of Stephen R. Miniman and Deborah A. Miniman versus County of Livingston and Livingston County Sheriff. Please notify me today if you plan to attend the legislative night on August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and the NiSAC Fall Seminar information is on your desks. Please let me know today if you plan to attend.
Thank you. Abstracts claims, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Is there any question or discussion on the abstracts of claims? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Several resolutions on the preferred agenda?
Proclaiming August first through the seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as World Breastbeating Week. Proclaiming July seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, as New York State Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervision Week. Providing for a public hearing to consider public comment on the county's proposal to submit a community development block grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal Mobile and Manufactured Home Replacement Program. Supporting a two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three New York State Local Government Efficiency Grant Application for the purchase of a shared vacuum truck. Providing for a public hearing to consider public comment on the adoption of a new Seeker Shore Environmental Assessment Form for certain actions related to agricultural districts within Livingston County. Appointing a member to the Livingston County Water and Sewer Authority Board, Barry Cece. Resolution adopting digitally-formatted records as acceptable official records for the Records Retention and Disposition Schedule, LGS zero-one, issued by the New York State Archives and Records Administration.
Thank you. I'll ask, is there any discussions on any of these resolutions on the preferred agenda?
No.
Hearing none, I'd look for a motion in a second to bring to a vote, please.
Motion, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're carried. Roll, please, on this, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
We have some resolutions that are going to require a separate roll call.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Coastal Staffing, Inc., and the Nurse Connection Staffing, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health.
Village of Lester. Don Martin. County of Monroe. Jamie Roche. And Suni Geneseo.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on any of these contracts? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Any questions or discussion on awarding this bid? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for Livingston County Murray Hill Campus and Al Lorenz Park Site Electrical Upgrades Scoping Lobella Associates.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Appointment of Deputy County Administrator for Planning and Special Projects, Angela Ellis, as a certifying environmental officer for a community development block grant project.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Any questions or discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, New York State Department of State.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Is there any questions or discussion on this grant award contract? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Mr. Neap, amending the two thousand twenty-two Livingston County Budget, Highway, Office for the Aging and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Any questions or discussion on this transfer? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Is there any questions or discussion on this conveyance? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-One Three Eighty-Three, New York Solar Zero Three LLC Pilot Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted. Amending the two thousand twenty-two Livingston County Salary Schedule, Emergency Medical Services Department and Human Resources.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Are there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Danville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. I seventeen ninety-three, absent two sixteen, adopted.
Amending a portion of Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-two dash thirty-six, Veteran Services Agency.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Neap. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, other roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Anville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I-1793, absent 216, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022-36, Payment in Lue of Vacation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none at all, please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Records Management Department, KEO Records Management Services and Gary Elbright.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with this resolution and ask for your consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any question on either of these two contracts? Hearing none at all, please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I-1793, absent 216, adopted.
Michelle, I did have one appointment, please.
Sure. For the Glow Workforce Development Board, Lori Bush, and she represents business.
Thank you. Before we, we have one other item under other business. Does E and U or any of the board members have anything else before we go into that recognition portion of our meeting?
I do not, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, we're going to move into a special recognition and do an introduction right now. Likewise, welcome to introduce Senator George Borello here this afternoon. He represents the 57th District here in New York State, which includes some of the Southern counties of Livingston County. I'd like to thank you on behalf of our county for all that you do and also thank you for coming here this afternoon and recognizing Jason Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really a pleasure to be here today. Today's a special day. The New York State Senate has something called the Veterans Hall of Fame, and each year we choose someone within our district to be inducted into that Veterans Hall of Fame. Last year I was moved when I came here and Jason Skinner gave us a tour of the beautiful Veterans Park that you have there. And not only was I blown away when I first came up and I saw, you know, the steel with the metal poppies, but then to get the story behind them, the inspiration, the fact that your veterans were able to work and actually create something that was a monument to their fellow veterans and was really therapeutic for them. We all know that so many of our veterans suffer from PTSD, and that's where Jason Skinner has really outshined so many others and was a clear choice for this award because he has worked so hard. Not only did he serve our nation bravely, and he's a veteran himself, but he has continued on in service to his fellow veterans and to the people living in this county. You know, when we do these awards normally, you know, we go to, you know, a VFW hall or we go someplace like that, and, but Jason specifically asked to come here to be in front of the Board of Supervisors because he felt that you were such an integral part of his role in helping veterans. You have empowered him to do wonderful things for the veterans of this county and indeed in his role now in the state leadership, leading other county veteran services as the president of that organization. So many things that he felt were integral and that have defined him and his service to your county and our nation. So I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to the leadership here, what you have done to make Jason exemplary and to let him really speak out on behalf of the veterans of this, of this community, to do things like this amazing park that is just an example of what can be done when we work together to ensure that our veterans get the help and the recognition that they deserve. And that's why today we take an opportunity to honor someone who has done so much and asked for so little in return. Jason Skinner is truly a unique and exceptional person. And some other folks are going to speak today. In addition myself, but I wanted to open up by saying thank you very much for letting us do this here. Thank you very much for what you do and for making Jason the, the person that I'm more than proud and honored to, to induct into the New York State Senate Veterans Hall of Fame. With that, we'll move on to your county administrator, Ian Coyle, your county administrator, for a few remarks.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for being here and thank you for your support for this induction. I will say we support it. I, if I knew that supporting Jason's induction into the New York State Veterans Hall of Fame would cause him to want to potentially relocate out of New York State, I probably wouldn't have done that, but I digress. So Jason has that rare ability in his role that he has served his country and now he serves his community and he's serving the community members who have also served their country. So that is an immensely important responsibility that he has carried out over the years here in Livingston County. It is very much special work. All the work that we do is in the public service realm, in the social service realm. Veteran service is very special work. I say it requires the three feats, patience, perseverance, and passion, all of which he has in droves. Jason, as the Senator indicated, has really raised the profile, not just in New York State, of what we're trying to do for our veterans in Livingston County, but also nationally with different recognition from the New York State Association of Counties, from the National Association of Counties, Jason's participation on various boards and initiatives. If you needed someone for some veterans-related endeavor, to be a spokesperson, to be a board member, to be an involved party, to provide inputs, to give ideas, to lead the effort, to be in the background of the effort, that guy right there would do it. He did it on behalf of Livingston County. He did it on behalf of every veteran that put on a uniform to serve their country. And, and really he raised the profile of the county and the service provision that we offer here. So we're definitely indebted and gratitude for all of that work that he did. I myself will be personally grateful for his work around the area of suicide prevention and awareness, which he was a stalwart on for the last many years. His push for all counties, of course selfishly and specifically Livingston County, but all counties to get Joseph Dwyer program funds from New York State, which we were, after years of lobbying that we see successful this year, been doing. I'm very proud to say that Senator was supportive of that and Jason was the lead champion of that across the state. And Jason has been a friend, a colleague, and a coworker over many years, and I certainly personally and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors commend him for this very worthwhile recognition. Now, as Jim Merrick was so fond of saying, I'd like to invite Don Higgins to the podium because I understand that he also has a few words to say. So, Don.
Last night I took my shoes off so that I could count up how many veterans have been inducted into the New York State Senate Veterans Hall of Fame since it was initiated in 2005. And I counted 746, including this year's 2022 inductees. If you go to the Senate website, you can click on the name of any of those veterans to read their biography and learn about the amazing things they've done, both in the military and in their civilian and professional lives. I'm very grateful that Jason Skinner can now be included amongst those giants. In addition to his decorated U.S. Army service to our nation, in addition to all he does to assist the veterans of Livingston County and their families, I'm very grateful that Jason had the vision to initiate and facilitate the creation of our very special Livingston County Veterans Monument by securing the approval and support of the county administrator and the Board of Supervisors and bringing together all of the partners and supporters and agencies and veterans to make the project come to life. In February 2019, I had an experience that many will never have. I joined three other New York State County Veteran Service Directors in laying a wreath at the Tomb of the Young Ones at Arlington National Cemetery. Thanks to my daughter being there that day, we have priceless photos of that event, and I was able to honor my dad by carrying his World War II hat and his Tuskegee Airman badge. That experience, which I will forever cherish, was made possible because of Jason Skinner's invitation, and I will be forever, forever grateful to him for giving me that opportunity. Jason, I'm grateful for the mutual respect and friendship that we've developed over the years. I'm grateful that we can call each other and vent about things and seek guidance and assistance from each other. I'm very proud that you are now very deservedly included amongst the giants of the New York State veteran community.
You know, our veterans are truly the firm ground beneath our democracy. We have a reason we exist, and, you know, this is an opportunity now for us in some small way to say thank you. But it's something that Jason does every day, ensures that those, those in the greatest need get the services that they deserve, to ensure that the tangled web of government bureaucracy that often is included within veteran services can be untangled by God of Jason. That's what he does best, right? So with that being said, I'd like to invite Jason up so that we can actually present you with the official plaque. Can you come to the stage and sweep for you? Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the New York State Senate, Jason, you are now a member officially of the Veterans Hall of Fame.
I'm all the everyone else here today. You guys know who I am, but there's a couple stories I guess you haven't heard. I'm originally from Indiana. I used to come up here and visit my mom's side of the family in Bloomville, New York, where she, remember those family trips, listening to talk radio for all of $12 on them? I'm in Paul Harvey, which is kind of on the New York State, rest of the story. So I'm going to give you a little version of some of my life's work. My grandfather served in the United States Cavalry on horseback in the 1920s. They served out of Fort Brown, Texas, and they controlled the border back then when a machine gun guy like himself was a two-man team and they had to pull this thing behind a team of horses. You know, fast forward, met my uncle Jeff Shears, who was the mayor of Bloomville, and a judge for 22 years. He was a World War II veteran who was indeed a battle of the ball, yard, and spores, and liberated U.K. He was inducted to the New York State Hall of Fame in 2010. I served up at Fort Drum. I came down and was visiting family and him while I was in active duty service, and I happened to go into my first VFW and met a guy that I knew, Mark Schumaker. Mark Schumaker was a Vietnam veteran that served in the air cavalry. He was shot down twice, earned two Purple Hearts, and he was a mentor in what it meant to be a veteran and what it meant to serve. So in the VFW, we do a lot of things like going to universities and providing full military honors, like Dennis Staley and the guys at the 5005 Coast. And by the way, this is their second member that is now a Hall of Fame inductee, Dennis Staley, was inducted a couple of years back. And we also have another inductee, Jake Davis, in Caledonia, who's recently also inducted. So that's two Geneseo, one Caledonian to keep this count. So working with this mentor, he taught me about service and how we could raise money and help people that were deployed. So I had an MRE dinner and people paid. They had MREs and lived like somebody deployed for all of 10 minutes, but we, we got phone cards for people that drove overseas. It was a good feeling. So what I did after, after that, I, I met a couple guys and all of them were in the air cavalry here in Vietnam, and they never ever thanked me for their service. And so we all see that photo of that Stetson Hacks tradition for cavalry members. There's another that not a whole lot of people know, there's silver spurs and gold spurs. When you're deployed in combat, you earn your gold spurs. I asked my command at that time, a command sergeant major, colonel, and at my corporal level, that was quite high. I asked the command and said, look, we have a spur dinner coming up and I'd like them to be our honorees and our guests, and I'd like them to be awarded their golden spurs because they did not and they returned from Vietnam. And they said yes. And all I had to do was ask, but they said yes. So I had this huge dinner up at Fort Drum and all four of those guys came up, and when it came time for them to stand up on a, on a chair and the younger veteran or the younger active duty military people were there to place those spurs on their, on their boots, people of all ranks were fighting for the honor to do so. It was a very touching moment for me, and what really hit home was that high, that feeling, all you have to do is ask. And that's what I did here. I asked you and you gave me permission to ask. I guess I am me, but majority of the time I've always had help. I had mentors. When I walked into this role, like many without being officially named a mentor, you know, helps anyone else. So all the other department heads that have been there and done that, you have a question and they're like, I can help you walk you right through that and we'll, we'll make it through that. And there are days when you just don't know where you're going. But there are other mentors, Don Higgins, you know, and I had him by my side. I probably wouldn't have felt as though I, I could have asked to help build the monument or any other projects we've done in the past. And there are great things going into the future. Without David Carey running the office, I wouldn't have the time to be doing these special things. You know, he's got access to everything I ever had to and, and, you know, the RT, so he shares in a lot of what I've done. Without him, none of these things would have been possible. I've got to recognize my buddy out there, Clark Young, another Marine, served the county for 30-plus years on the Marine Patrol and was also served in the Marine Corps, which, you know, the Navy's here. I got my buddy Phil Rowan did 28 years in EOD, which means Explosive Ordnance Disposal, meaning they blow up things and get rid of stuff. And, and he had to point out one day that the Army PX or Exchange where you buy clothing and whatnot had a T-shirt that had ordinance misspelled on it, as in the ordinance that you guys deal with laws and regulations. So that's the Army for you. We don't know how to spell, but make sure you know how to get things done. So without your support, and without growing up the way I did, without those mentors, I wouldn't be here. So I really do appreciate your role and share this with the Livingston County Board of Supervisors and my boss, Ian Coyle. So thank you.
Just gave you this amazing challenge point. It actually has a copy on it on one side, so that's very special. Thank you, everybody. I just want to take a quick minute also. We're going to have some refreshments afterwards. Those of you who'd like to join us, so again, we appreciate it. Also, as it happens every decade, after the census, we reshuffle the deck when it comes to our districts. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I spent three years serving as a senator for a portion of Livingston County, and I just want to thank you all for the honor to serve as your senator. And although I will not be your senator after the first of the year, still call on me if needed, and you've got some great folks that will be taking up that charge, and it's been truly my honor to serve as your New York State senator. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Alson, you adjourn.
Congrats.
All else in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hold. There, you can stand and adjourn.
Yeah, it's your fault. Yeah. What are you doing over there? Well, not on that. Look, I have, I lost my feet after 50 minutes. I don't know why. Just stopped.